Hey, we're going to call this council work session to order. It's Wednesday, August 2nd. Time is 2:00 P. M. It is now time for visitor comments. This is a period that is a central part of government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. The city council will take all input into consideration, however, in observance of the court rules and laws. This isn't a time to dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you or city administrator recorder taking notes of action if needed. So who would like to come up? Please come up and state your name for the record and keep three minutes for less.
Even so bad, 360 St. Helens. What it does, there is now a destination of clean sediments from the Portland Harbor. They're not clean, but an acceptable level of contamination that they can be dumped without being certified into a landfill. The clean sediments cannot be dumped in the Willamette River, but they can be dumped in the Columbia River at the St. Helens Bar. The St. Helens Bar is just upstream from the St. Helens Water Antake. Next, the recent newspaper article announced the sale of the Armstrong Plant fell through. This is not the most disturbing part of the article. The article explains that the site is now an orphaned site because past owners went bankrupt will no longer exist. And DEQ can only clean it up when it has funds. The site has been known to be contaminated, has had contamination problems for a long time, but only after private companies have, are no longer responsible for a site as DEQ Act. Next to this site, the Pope and Talbot Site, which the port owns, has been trying to get DEQ to clean up for 23 years. Now that the time for industrial responsibility has passed, DEQ presented a plan for cleanup with this pulling on the port to clean up. Next to the Port and Talbot line is the White Paper Mill with Boise and DEQ have been examining a method for decamination. The window of responsibility is 15 years. After seven years, DEQ and Boise have come up with a temporary fix for the in-water containment of toxic products. This is only a temporary solution and will have to be redone. In the next seven years, DEQ plans to investigate contamination problems on land Boise site. The city is presently designing roads, business sites, and utilities for the white mill property without an idea where the contaminated areas are. Remember, the owners of the contaminated areas will have to clean it up after DEQ defines it. Next to the White Mill Site is the Cooling. Has very strong indications of problems with no official comment on cleanup from DEQ. Next to this site is the Waterfront Site with Mo Foster said was clean and the GeoTech people indicated problems, but did not mention contamination. Recent construction of water sewer lines has shown some very troubling contamination. Hopefully, the city has alerted DEQ to these contamination problems. Another troubling finding is that GeoTech sent some test boars. They stopped short of large old field problems. They left the boars in some areas very shallow. The fact that state maps show the extent of these organic fill areas and GeoTech avoided the required tests to prove or disprove that these problems is alarming. Score is St. Helens has two and a half miles contaminated waterfront and DEQ has not had the responsible industrial entities clean it up or completely identify the contaminated areas. If St. Helens sells any of these parcels of land without telling the new owners about contamination problems or builds residences on the ground that could cause cancer, it is possible that there is no amount of insurance to cover the damage. Thank you.
Do you have other comments?
Yeah.
Hello, City Council and Mayor Shoal. It's Steve Toski, resident of St. Helens. I'm apologizing that I'm not appearing there before you personally, but what's causing me to appear is Patrick's recent departure. And I am calling to say a few things. One, I want to thank Patrick Berkeley for his service to the city. I worked closely with Patrick for a year while he was liaison to the Planning Commission and his guidance and encouragement was instrumental in having the Planning Commission adopt its proactive rules and to move forward in a proactive manner. I'm saddened to hear that his work responsibilities have pulled him away from the valuable role that he was playing for our government. So Patrick will be missed and I want to thank him. I want to give a quick shout out to Crystal just because I see her here. She took great pictures on the Fourth of July. One of the most beautiful fireworks pictures I think I've ever seen, certainly one of the most beautiful pictures of St. Helens. I want to congratulate the council on the arrival of the shuttle boat. I think, I know that that's somewhat controversial, but I think investing in tourism and investing in this type of a thing and having it being paid for by tourism funds is an excellent move. And I very much congratulate you and E2C for the accomplishment and look forward to how that boat will be used in the future. Last, I want to announce that I certainly would like to be considered for filling the vacancy for the council. I've reviewed the laws. I'm hoping for a public interview. I'm hoping to be part of the process of consideration. I think all of you know me. My resume is posted on my website. I did run for election. I got 1,986 votes. And I believe that my background and experience can help St. Helens meet some of the serious challenges that it has. I have an advanced education and a law license and I'm going into semi-retirement. And I have some time to help the city council on some of the complex issues it faces. And I wanted to make sure I came here today and made it official that I would like to have my name considered. And I'll be contacting Ms. Payne to see if there's anything I need to do officially in that regard. Thank you very much.
Hey, other visitor comments? If you're on Zoom and you want to make other comments, we can't, we have to be able to recognize you if you want to raise your hand. Last chance. Wait a minute. Okay, we're not seeing any, so we're gonna move on. Our first item on the agenda is Volpe Court Semi-Annual Report. We have Judge Amy here. I don't see Sam, so Jamie.
Back again, I believe Mr. Erskine works in Proppdale on Wednesday. Uh. So. Such beautiful after in here in St. Helens. Love driving up. I did just review Mr. Erskine's report though. I know why there is a discrepancy when I look at his numbers with total cases charged in 2022 and 2023 with my numbers. I don't know if anyone noticed that, but the clerks ran the reports through our Tyler system. So that's what we came up with ours. So I'll have to ask Mr. Erskine about that, though. But our primary enforcement type of cases that we can go in the court are the traffic offenses. And I thought that was interesting. It's the first time I've actually run the numbers and looked at those. That's what I thought. And that was it. Interesting. Highlight. The DUI treatment that I believe I was pretty fired up about the last time I was here has been resolved, discussed. I've been working really well with Ms. Little from CCMH and our clerk, Ms. Messenger. Speaks to Ms. Little each month and is basically getting information we need regarding the treatment records for the DUI and other substance abuse issues. So I don't know what will happen with urban health authority and their issues for the employees, but on our end, everything's working well. And the other exciting fact I didn't note in here was the electronic ticketing is about to go live. And I've been chirping about this for about four years now of how we need the electronic ticketing and the police department. Sergeant Eustace has worked really hard getting that up and going. So the police department's almost all set, my understanding. We are just going through glitches. So we've done some practice rounds. There's a few glitches that Sergeant Eustace is working on. Once it goes live, it's really hard to undo things to fix them. So we're just going through the glitches and it should be rolled out really quickly. So the officers won't have to stand on the side of the road and handwrite tickets. And perhaps with that, maybe we'll get more traffic violations in the court. But it will be very efficient for the clerks to, to upload them because they just upload from the police department system directly into our system. It all works together. So they won't have to hand input everything. And then the other big issue is the defense attorney contracts that we'll talk to you about. So when I first started, it was set up where the defense attorneys would bill per, by the hour. And I believe at the time it was forty or forty-five dollars a dollar. That was in 2018, which was very low. And it had been many other courts billed per case. So we came up with $200 for a new case filing and then 125 for probation violation case. It doesn't have the potential to have a jury trial. It's just a quick hearing. And that's worked well, but it hasn't been changed. And Ms. Heil and Mr. Sharpstein have requested a flat fee, a monthly fee similar to mine at the St. Erskine's. I think that administratively is more beneficial for them because it's less admin work doing all the billing and keeping track of it. My analysis in my report, I believe I mentioned other cities. Oregon City does this flat rate. What I did have at the time I wrote it was Scott Pusis. Scott Pusis means full courts rates. So they pay Ms. Heil 2,500 per month. And she had requested 3,000 per month last year when Mr. Brown was here still. And he and I were discussing what an appropriate amount would be. And then Mr. Brown left and it's basically been sort of tabled. And so she's been waiting for a year for this response. And I take partial responsibility that I wasn't pushing harder to bring it to all of you. So she has indicated that she will not accept less than 2,500 to be similar to Scott Pusis. And I think that given her tenure with the court, that increase to that amount would be appropriate. Ms. Heil has been very, very committed to this too, representing her clients. She's been with us the longest. I think she's been with us almost the whole time I've been here. She's been here longer than Mr. Sharpstein. And she really does an excellent job. They all go and meet with their clients at the jail, but Ms. Heil is really committed to doing that. That's really important for the court that we have attorneys who go out and meet with their clients at the jail because then we can hold them and we have more efficient processing of the cases. So I did want to ask for that or on her behalf, I mean, I'm not representing her, but as the administrator of the court. I believe that will come up later today. And I did want to explain the difference because Mr. Sharpstein's, I believe, would be 2,000. And to reflect Ms. Heil's tenure with us and her commitment to the city would be 2,500. We do have another attorney, Mr. Lesking, who's recently started with us. So I'd like to keep him at the per-case rate. We're still almost in like probationary period with him. Where we see how he works with the court and the clients. So that's what I wanted to really present to you and answer questions about that as well. My birthday anniversary. The time flies. We're having fun.
I might add the analysis of, because this actually covers first three items on the agenda. Is evaluating the financial impact, what that means, right? So we had looked at it a couple of years ago. We looked at it last year. And you know, part of the story that we don't, the numbers don't tell is how the court operates, how these people do all this work and they only get paid for some of it. And they, they don't get paid for unless the good, right? The case goes, because it's hurt, right? So they don't show up, they don't.
Oh, yes. Yeah. So if the case isn't resolved, they don't get paid for it. So on the flat, on the per-case fee. So I get appoint somebody, you know, I find Joe Smith to Ms. Heil. She can't bill for it until the case is done. So if you have somebody who's failed to appear and wouldn't show up again, she comes, she's prepared for the case. She's done a lot of work on it. And then she can't, doesn't get paid because the person's in the wind. And so this eliminates that problem. Despite their work, they're not getting paid. If we're on a flat fee, it's just they're getting paid for their work. So.
So part of that effort that, what we learned both with our finance director looking at it and Janelle's looking at it. Well, he was here, it was around 2,000 a month and but that didn't include the hidden things about these people doing work and not getting compensated for it. And it sounds like Judge Linger has planned to kind of wait more work towards more tenured person, attorney Heil. The other one, here at 2,000 and near documents that went into the packet, they're both at 2,000. So we need to make an amendment to that if you're supportive of that.
How many attorneys did the other cities have though? So there, you said like Scott Pusis paying a flat. Yes, and it's just Ms. Heil. So it's just one attorney and we're looking at two with one, three, two flat fee and one with on the per-case rate. Oregon City has three. Gladstone has two. Gladstone's at the per-case rate. Lake Oswego and Westland both pay $60 an hour. The state pays for misdemeanor cases. That was in email. I can't remember. It was like 130, I think, per hour. So there was a huge discrepancy with the pay that someone is being, the defense attorney is being paid for a misdemeanor case in circuit court versus municipal one. And despite the work they did. How do you figure out, you know, how many attorneys the city needs? That's a good question. It's, it's based more on case. So I try to limit it out. I have a log marks on how many I've done. If, and they generally get about six to eight per month. And so when they start complaining, there's too many. Then you know, okay, more. We also, I like to have three because of conflict cases. So if someone, I had a case just recently with three defendants. And you can't have one same defense attorney on the defendant, you know, so we had to have three for that one. We can always ask some of the local attorneys who work for the state will, are kind enough to take one on if it's a conflict where we need an extra one. Is that what Scott Pusis does? Don't have one attorney? I would guess so. Honestly, I was surprised to hear they only had one. Yeah, I know their case numbers are really low because of issues with the police department and the city.
We like four officers.
Yeah, like their, their numbers are a fraction of a regular market. And Oregon Cities' numbers are really high, but they have a huge failure to appear rate because their jail won't keep people. It's shocking to me now and something I'm proud of is that we don't have many people here. I think a lot of that has to do with the attorneys that we have. They reach out to them. We're very dedicated to tracking their clients down. And also that the jail will help people who have run into jail. You know, try not to. Try to hold people unless they fail to appear multiple times where I think that the only way to do this is within set really quick so that the time period is kind of short. But and seeing that that's one, here's why we don't have that failure to appear. But they do fail to appear. And that's when the attorneys aren't getting paid for it. So.
So I hear from you, John, in our budget, we are paying about 2,000 per flat, roughly by the case to case.
Yeah, aggregate it all.
Yes, when you figured it out, you and Allison, Gloria.
Yes. That's certain annual.
Yes. Per, so we're going to be going up 500 on one essentially, with the increase in budget. Kind of.
Potentially, yeah. Sorry to say.
Yeah.
And the other part of that I forgot to mention was that similarly, we haven't increased the defense attorney's pay, but that we should increase the cost to so right now I charge, I, the court imposes $200 per attorney fee. For a case, so the defendant pays $200 to the court for the cost of their attorney's fees. That I would recommend to go up to 250 for a new case and 175. So that's $50 increase for each of the two different types of cases. That may account for some portion of the increase. Ms. Heil.
Sure.
But.
Which is still cheap. I mean, to retain a lawyer private, you're going to spend $1,000, $2,000 easily, just to retain.
Yeah. I can't impose them. I do have to do an inquiry in every case of what the person's ability to.
Sure.
They're not able to pay.
Pay helps supplement any of that? No. Okay, there's curious.
Well, not for us, not for municipal court, not for municipal court. In the state, the circuit court they do. Yeah. But yeah, the city pays the cost of it then, you know, so if somebody is on disability and they can't work. And really, when I go, I can't impose them. I get overturned if I impose it.
So the increases are not unreasonable.
No.
What I hear.
Yeah. Gladstone is 300. I think that Oregon City's about 250, 275. They just recently increased theirs. With inflation and everything.
Well, this is the first three ends on our unit. We have a lot of questions.
Is there any kind of proposal for like a step system where as Ms. Heil's case, you've been here this long, you would get 2,500 rather than 2,000 or when is that? When does that take effect? When does that switch over?
It would take effect as soon as she signed the contract, the attorney signed the contract.
What's the, what would be the period where you would get 2,500 instead of 2,000? How long would they have been?
We haven't contemplated that.
Any recommendation for Ms. Heil is the 2,500 rate? Or did I hear that you were going to pull it up because turn it to 3,000? No, she said she went to go for less than 25.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not right. I think that that would be. I think she wants 3,000 and she, but I think that with the city's budget would be challenging. That's my concern. Where did the money come from? Yeah. You hear, you hear us talking all the time about just trying to maintain 24-hour policing and stuff. So we know budgets are at a constraint right now. So what do you think, John?
I think that public safety and a functional court system go together very, and I think we're in a really good place right now, but of course better than a place that it's been in the past.
Good, great.
And that revenue side to this equation that we retention of the people is, you know, general, I see.
Yeah, I would really echo that. The retention is really important because there is a huge crisis in the state, in the entire country with defense attorneys. And people just aren't willing to do it because of the, how much they, how little they make. And the caseloads, their caseloads are just so high that it's in the county, I've heard that there are people sitting in custody who don't have lawyers and they'll sit there for weeks and weeks without a lawyer, which I think is unconstitutional. But there's just not enough defense attorneys to have them. So Ms. Heil has been very committed to the city. I think she really does an excellent job with her clients. And I think that because of it, she really goes above and beyond what a general defense attorney does, the connection she makes in trying to help them be better people through the whole process. I have been very impressed with, and I think that that really benefits the city. They, all the defense attorneys we have are good. I want to retain them so that we continue to provide that service to the community. So. I definitely see the need. My, of course, my, you know, political answer is going to be we just have to pay for it. Might be somewhere. Just to be totally transparent, are you proposing or are we, are we looking at upping the rates to cover, make this coverage happen? Want to be totally transparent, make sure the rates for people.
$35.
And that would make this coverage. Dollars, sure. So it would go from 200 to 250, 125 to 175 to count for that. Okay. And I think that that is, you know, it's been five years since those rates increased. And that's a long time, you know, but just with the cost of everyone doing business, that it, the rate should increase at some point. And so this seems like an appropriate time. But I think the point is valid too of should there be a built-in system of at a certain point, you, is there a step increase or cost of living increase? And by I work in criminal law, not human resources. So I don't know what that would look like per se. And I think it's a good idea so that you're not constantly renegotiating the contract. I just don't. I think that that's not a, any question. And in that same light, I think it would be appropriate to have a ratio, you know, that is analyzed of how many, you know, citizens we have and how many lawyers we need to represent, just to make sure that those numbers are clearly clear also for the citizens. Citizens or the number of cases filed. Yeah, depending on however you would do that math to determine how many attorneys are needed for, you know, for capital of the city. So we're not the same size of Oregon City and things like that. So yeah, different ratio for us.
Great questions.
I don't think we want to aspire to Multnomah County and having long wait times and being defended and just finding that's, that right spot in the balance.
Yeah. Last week we had a case, two cases where they were, I arranged the two defendants on Monday and then I set them for a hearing on Thursday, which their probation violation, no, actually one was a new case. And Mr. Sharpstein came right out, went to the jail, saw them, and we had the cases done in four days. I mean, that is a remarkable turnaround time. That's, and that really shows how committed Mr. Sharpstein and Ms. Heil are. And we do not want to go the Multnomah County model. Yeah. So.
But the bigger question about budget is real. And Gloria and I have been working top of mind on city finances, budget control, expenditure control. To that nature. And this will be, when we get through the fall, I can bring up a lot of more depth discussions about budget. Sustainability, that kind of thing.
Any office that topic, are there any other questions or for me? Didn't you get a new bailiff recently? How's that working out? The bailiffs have been great. We had Oregon Patrol Services. And maybe a year or two. And maybe a year or two, I think since the police department stopped doing it. They want to um. Oregon Patrol Services is looking into getting a contract or insurance so that they can transport defendants themselves. Um that would increase the cost of their service. We'd have to pay more for that. Um and so.
What's the process right now?
We would call the police department and an officer comes and transports a person. Um I'm always open to having people turn themselves in. You know, they're not a risk either that same day or later that day. So they. Give themselves the right to the jail uh so that we. Don't have an officer off the street. But there are some times when we have to um and so then the officer comes in and I've talked to the police department to see if that. Has been a burden on them. And they have indicated it has not been a burden to have an officer briefly come down, pick the person up and. So. So I but Oregon Patrol Services is um trying to get that up and going. So that may be in the future where they propose that. And so I think with it with each city that I work with, it would be. What's the benefit? Is it taking away that many officers from the street in their duties to do court transports? As we have a lower failure to appear rate, I don't see it. I don't think it's a problem for us. In Oregon City. People hardly ever come to court, so it might be more important for. The Oregon Patrol Services to help facilitate that, those transports. But as far as their just general presence in the court, they do their stuff. They also wanted to have two bailiffs instead of one, and I don't think we need that. We're still a small enough court, so. And probably because these parts are close to I have my little button. But I can call them and they they're always really quick.
I don't have any more questions, so I'm the main person asking questions.
So my only other comment was on Mr. Skins' report when he discussed that he'd be willing to talk further about specifically enforcement at thirteen nights. So I would like to hear some more about that when he's got some time.
I'll mention that to him and maybe another. Might be able to call in it during a council meeting. I'm not, I don't deal with that advice.
Well, yeah, I don't know. I didn't catch that part, but I know that our officers have really been down there in horse seat. Thirteen nights and they've been had a huge presence for. Um since after the first one, we had an audience misses. So. As many as five to six officers sometimes. And usually always at least two. Unless you get a call. All right, I think that's it. You have everything. Okay.
Thank you.
It'll be another five years. Enjoy the summer.
Yes. So I know we have something coming up and. So we're bringing up, but we may have to. This in half uh because we have about. Eleven minutes. Okay, so my next item is review library. Oh no, library department's in my interview.
Thank you, Councilor Mayor, for the opportunity to fill you in on all the great things that are happening at the library these days. I'll zip through these happy, so maybe I'll just give you up. Perfect. Thank you for reading my one. It's a reminder of how we serve our community, um helping people find resources. We do in-depth um. Resource or in-depth research for folks. Brenda um Erin Canaga in particular has been doing some work with. Um folks doing some genealogical research. Um we have lots of online resources already that the library provides, but also. She can really dig deep and do some in-depth research for folks. Um obviously homework help and you see some happy teens here who came to hang out at the library and. That's one of the things that we're really proud about is we have a growing community of teens that um come and do their research, do some homework, hang out with each other. Um which, you know, we're really proud that we're a safe space for them and that they really see that. Of course, we're helping people um we're working on certificates, getting their GED, uh business, small business support. Everything from um doing research on an idea to um how to uh move forward with their business plan. Um local history, um we have a very nice uh uh albeit small collection of local history materials. Including uh books and newspapers and all matter of uh we call ephemera printed things. That um we have collected and that um don't check out because they're so fragile, but that we make available to the uh community if they want to. Do that research in the library and then active learning. Lots of different ways for our little friends, especially uh story time to come and move their bodies and listen to some stories and um. And practice early literacy skill. So we just finished our strategic planning process and I'll be talking about that um when I do a report about that, but I thought this. Um might be of interest to you. We uh did a ten pay uh ten uh question survey, Survey Monkey and sent that out to um the community. Invited people through our social media and at the library desk, our library board helped to spread the word as well. Um one of the questions was, what do you look to our library for? You can see that the traditional services that we provide, checking out materials is. Something that people still see us um doing and that's great because that is the foundation of um our our service. Um they come to the library to get different kinds of information. They use the library to do their studies or just to hang out. You can see the uh programming and Makerspace are also very popular. Um I'll talk about Makerspace in a little bit. Um and then programs um for uh in the Columbia Center that aren't actually library services, people come to do that. And then using online resources. One of the things that we're working on is um increasing um visibility of our online resources so that. Uh folks uh start to realize that the online stuff they're using through the library webpage is actually items there. That's. Materials and information that we provide that we that the library fund. Again, I'll go um through the strategic plan in a little bit, but our new strategic plan, should you approve it? Um has three goals um to develop the library as the community's living room and by that we mean. A space where you can come to learn, where you can come to hang out, where you can come to interact with other people, whether that's programs or individuals. Um engage the community in lifelong learning. And again, that's lots of different ways of um providing information for folks and then. Enhancing access to library services and we'll talk about that um ear- uh later, but. I we mean not only the things that you can do in the library, but how we serve the community outside of the library building. Uh open hours and visits, uh as you can see by looking at that last column there. Our um visits thirty seven thousand three hundred ninety, a huge improvement over twenty five thousand five hundred the previous fiscal year. Of course, that's in part reflected with um pandemic um absences, if you will, but um. And we still do have folks that are coming in to pick up those. Free tests that we um provide thanks to Community County or Columbia County uh public health. Um but also just reflects people in increased comfort in being here and the increased programming that we're offering. Um the other thing that I thought I'd point out is visits per capita. You can see that we have two point six visits per uh in the last fiscal year per capita. Um assuming the population of fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty. Uh we think that's a great demonstration of how um. Active and engaged the community is with us and how important we are to the community. Um database use. Now, these are those online resources I was talking about earlier, ancestry dot com. Um you know, we have a really strong genealogy program here and. That's reflected in the number of uh uses of ancestry dot com. Freegal is our music uh service and um that's been really popular. And then Library to Go, e-audio and ebook, those are the um online resources that you can use. We thank the state of Oregon. They help uh they do most of the funding for that. Um and you can see they're extremely popular. Um new this last fiscal year, A to Z recipes, if you're looking for a new recipe, you can. Um you can use this enormous database. Um Educate Station is um something that we acquired for teachers and for homeschool families. Um it has lesson plans, it has lots of other kinds of resources for um learners. And then Mediti TV, which is a um. Uh film and um opera, all kinds of different um streaming resources. All right, youth services, you know, we're back to full strength with um with Erin Keeney, our youth librarian. Um getting into place. We're doing the weekly storytimes. This is just a uh photograph of just, you know, it's humming in there. Lots of we see some grandparents and their kiddos. We've got dads coming in with their kids. Um kids coming in on their own. We have some ten year olds that like to come and hang out and um. Use a computer and um it's a great opportunity for us to engage with them. Um we instituted Lego PrePlay, which is super popular, and the homeschool meetup has been crazy forty. I think we had forty two people at the first homeschool meetup and. We're doing that once a month. We're hoping to increase that um. As we every kind of gen of our um regular programs. And then Steam Zone is something brand new. Um Erin just implemented right before the end of the. School year, but we'll be doing a monthly program with different kinds of steam activities. We'll be using the Maker Space for that. Um and then special programs, we have a we have our summer programs um for adults, which is uh DIY programs once a week. And we'll be extending some of that kind of thing into the fall. And then we're doing outreach like um. Aaron's going to Head Start. Um we are working with the rec department and various other ways that we're again. Meeting our community outside the library. So. Maker Space, of course, the tech funding is gone and we're doing uh we're working on a strategy for um getting people back into the Maker Space. Right now, Aaron is using the Maker Space fairly frequently for the programs that they're doing. Carnivorous plants has been super popular. They're doing slime today. Um we've had a volunteer also come in and teach some classes as well. And then our longer term plan is we're training up the full time staff and we'll be staffing the space. At least once a week, each of the four of us will be staffing the space for several hours to support people and some of the equipment that we use.
How many bug eating plants we talking about?
How many what? I think they had twelve. We had like twenty five people come in, we registered and they we had twelve plants. I think they got a couple there. Um anyway, so that's our plan for moving forward. All right, summer library counts. It's an update. We're almost through. We're in week six of eight weeks. We have uh two hundred eighty four youth registered. That's an increase from last year. All of these numbers are increases from last year. Uh I think that represents or uh reflects um again, increased programming for adults, teens and kiddos. Um having people back in the library and um just, you know, continue to have a lot of community support. And then. As you can see, surprisingly, the adults have somewhat out um eclipsed the um youth in logged minutes of reading. Yay grownups. Um we're having our biannual um genealogy conference, speaking of genealogy, September fifteenth through uh seventeenth. Brenda um heads up that effort. Um it's free to all comers. We had about eighty, we had over eighty attendees last year. We've already got. A very hefty number of people that have registered. Um all the sessions are hands, almost all the sessions are hands on sessions. This year we'll have a fellow coming in to talk about the railroad, the history of the railroad in Columbia County. Um we have a uh national expert coming in to help people learn how to use ancestry dot com and something called. Family Station, I believe, um to um. Do more effective searches and start to do some in-depth searches about um for uh genealogical history. Um and that's free again and um that's September fifteenth to the seventeenth, so please join us. It's been really pretty special again this year. Um community engagement, we're continuing to work with the Arts Guild and Columbia County Museum Association. Those illustrations are um. Of Bert Willemse's um stained glass work. He was a prominent nationally known. Uh stained art stained glass artist in um in Columbia County. Um did work all over the country. Um and his daughter Pam is gonna be giving a presentation on the eighth um at six P M. Um with some images of him, talk about his history and um some of the beautiful work that he did. So we're we've worked with Museum Association, the Arts Guild to um present this display and also to present the program. And then, as I said, we're working with the rec department, um Columbia County Health Department, where we have those um. Free uh. Uh COVID tests available and then we're working with CCMH on a few initiatives. Um one of which is to have some folks on their team come into the uh be in the hallway um at the library or at this Columbia Center. A few hours a week to provide sort of resources to folks that might need them that um you know, come into the library but not might not know to or where to go or. And then um just a quick overview of our library staff. This is who we have um in the place these days. And this of course reflects the Maker Space technician uh not being in that, otherwise we'd be at seven again. And then volunteers, right now we have twenty five active volunteers. We're so grateful for them. They do an enormous amount of things for us, as you can see. Seven hundred and fifty two hours shelving book, repairing books, preparing, is this photograph here, preparing items to go on the shelf. All of the, all of those things are invaluable and um you know, given particularly given the size of our staff, they're really essential to helping us keep things moving. For us, for our patrons.
You can do the volunteers.
Yeah, exactly. Absolutely. Uh we have a new library board member, Fana Masalas. We're very happy to have her on board. Um Janet Mann has taken on the presidency and Erin Martin, the vice presidency for this uh for this year. Perhaps this is an opportunity for me to say thank you to Councilor Berkeley for um his support of the library. We were very grateful to have his presence on the library board. Friends of the library, um uh active going group. They were um very present at Citizens Day and helped. Um get the word out about the library. We have a new roster of officers here and then a big thank you to Lynn Pettit. Who devoted the last four years of her um life um support or running the uh friends as the president and she's uh really. Helped the um organization grow and it's been enormous support to the library. We're very grateful for her service. And that is all I have for you. Let's go up to say thank you very much for your support. We really appreciate your presence at the library and um everything that you do for the community.
On a great report, I know that I have to go take a recess here um because we have to go into the executive session to uh. If you have David Rubino on Cathy and it's how are we going to do this? As far as zoom recess you.
So you just need to say that we're going to the month executive session and we should be back in fifteen minutes.
Yes.
And then.
Are you gonna do it on your end?
Well, I'll shut off the live stream and then I'll stop the recording. And so we'll stay on Zoom, but it won't be broadcast and then I'll record on there.
Everybody on Zoom, but on there after.
Yeah, and if you could say that, then. They won't feel bad when I kick them off.
Okay, so we are now getting ready to recess our work session. Two forty seven, if you're watching, uh understand that we are gonna be going to executive session under ORS one nine two six six zero two. E and H. You're turning and roughly about I want to say twenty minutes just to give us uh the opportunity to log in or log out and all that good stuff. And so um. Uh right now, I'm gonna ask everybody to please exit the room. Or exit the zoom and uh we're going to resume roughly at uh three ten roughly. Hey, welcome back to our work session. Apologize that we were a little bit late here. Um and just for clarification, uh reason why we went into executive session is our attorney. Um had something scheduled for our normal executive session time. It wasn't. It was just the only time we had to be updated. Or not we be updated on potential litigation. So. I just want to clarify for that. But we're gonna go on to our next item on our agenda, which is review library board five year strategic plan. Suzanne.
Hello again.
Hello. Sorry about that.
Okay. Not a problem. So um after much deliberation, um the library board um has created and submitted to you. Um our library, our um five year strategic plan, so that'll be twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight. Um I thought I'm gonna go through the plan fairly quickly, but I I wanted to give you a little bit of context before I did that. And that is just that our. Goals and practices at the library um are guided by best practices um as. Laid out by the American Library Association, which is our professional organization that we. We uh are guided by. laid out by the American Library Association, which is our professional organization that we, we are guided by. And that means that we are committed to providing information, being a source of information literacy, and I wanna read a quote because I, I wanna make sure that I can clearly explain what information literacy is, so this is from the American Library Association. To be information literate, a person must be able to recognize when information is needed and have the ability to locate, evaluate and use effectively the needed information. That is the foundational principle that we use to build all of the work that we do. And for us, information takes a lot of forms in a public library. It means we have things for you to borrow, we have DVDs, we have books, we have a library of things, that's kind of an expansion on, on the meaning of um information literacy that's uh come about in the last ten years or so as a trend in public librarianship. Um we also provide information in other sources, in other forms, so digital information. Um we connect people with um other, other parts of the community. Um and then the virtual resources and then community resources, I mentioned um team Howe um coming to um be at the library to um help support folks that come into the library, into the building that might need help with various services, so we don't provide those services, but our job, we see, we see our, our work as uh our opportunity to connect people with information, whether it's information about where they might find a, you know, a shower or they wanna find a funny, a fun DVD to watch for their, um you know, for their entertainment. And we also, I wanna be, I wanna um explain that library community in the context of our work is our patrons, the people that come and have a library card and use the library in that traditional way, and that includes our citizens and that includes people from outside the community. They pay a small fee to be able to use our services because we thank the citizens for their tax money that supports the library and we ask others outside of the community to also uh help support us in that way. But we also meet people that come and use the library or connect with library services in some other way that doesn't require a library card. Um and that's, that's all of the things that I was just describing to you, so when I say library community, that's what I mean, I mean I mean the community at large and people that come and um engage with the community. So when the board um created their library, uh the, the plan, they uh wanted to use some, uh they used some particular um phrases and pieces of information to um help them as they were creating the plan, um and then here's, and we call it opportunity, it's in the plan um that I, that I submitted, that we submitted. Um but it says that the library punches above its weight because we implement cutting edge offerings such as a maker space and library things and other things that we offer the community. Um they see that we are limited by the lack of awareness of types of services available, that was something that the um that the library board honed in on, um and limited resources that create a barrier to using library services for some community members, that means um the kinds of services that we can offer outside of the library, the number of staff we have based on what we can, you know, and how we might be able to spread that out and um and uh serve the community. And then efficacy of current mode of, of communication, how are we using communication tools, are we using them as effectively as we could? Um they note that we have a growing list of events and services available to patrons. They talked about the library community in the context of what I just described to you. And then they see that there are a lot of outreach, um expand, there's an expanding um collection of outreach opportunities. Um both formal and informal modes of communication. And then they know that um the library, an update of the library brand will bring us in line with our current needs and also give us another opportunity to reach out into the community in perhaps more effective ways. And then they note that we must have the resources and means to transform the library as we continue to meet and anticipate the needs of our community to ensure that it meets current and future needs and expand its reach to support and connect with all members of the community. So that's, that's, that's the context, all right, so what was our process? So we interviewed groups of stakeholders, um including you all, um we also uh interviewed staff, uh library board members, interviewed some of their um peers and other folks in the community. As I mentioned in our semi annual report, we used Survey Monkey quite extensively, we had about eight hundred responses to that and we asked a wide series of questions from how do you see the library being used to how would you like the library to be used? What do you, you know, what do you consider strengths and weaknesses? We convened a subcommittee, Ellen Jacobson, Jessica Sturdivant and A- Aaron Martin from the board did yeoman's work in putting together uh a draft that the um based on all the information, based on library board um input and um all of the other uh resources that came to bear and then, of course, board approval, we hope is the next step or the board, excuse me, the board approved it, uh and then we'll, obviously this is the one to do. So our structure is um built on three um in three, in, in three levels, so we have goals, uh which are the broader ideas, there were an umbrella for our specific initiatives and the, and our work plan. Then we, we have initiatives and you'll see if we go through here what those initiatives might be. Those are our opportunity to incorporate both our visionary and aspirational goals as well as those things that we can begin to accomplish now and I, I had to keep reminding myself and we all reminded ourselves that this is a five year strategic plan, so while we have some things in here that may seem like, you know, going to the moon, um maybe in five years it won't be so, um it won't be such a big reach, so then this, these are our opportunities to build towards those goals, so um aspirational ideas, visionary ideas and then strategies for advancing our goals and you'll see that as we go through the initiatives. And then the last piece of that is not actually a piece of the plan, but I guess the the result of the, of approval of this is then there will be, we will have a work plan within staff that will move us forward in achieving those goals. All right, so three goals. From my page here. Um oh, guiding principles first, sorry, can we go back, sorry. Um so libraries, a community living room, I talked a little bit about that, how we as a safe space, we as a place to get information, we as a place for people to exchange information, whether that's going to a program, talking to each other, teens sitting in the teen room, borrowing a book or getting information from us. Lifelong learning, that means we want the kiddos to come in here and learn how to um do some early literacy skills, we want teens to come in here and figure out how to get help with, with homework and other kinds of support. We want grownups to be in here and borrow books and engage in programs, so all the way through the, your life, we want you to keep coming back to the library and using our resources. And then access to library services, and when I refer, I'm referring now to how we reach out to the community, what we can do in the building and what we can do outside of the building. And then how do we communicate all of that, um and you'll see that built um into the goals, all right, thank you. Okay, so goal one, develop the library as a community's living room. You'll see that we have five initiatives here, amplifying information literacy for all ages and what we mean by amplifying is hold on a minute, just lost my page. Amplifying information for all ages, excuse me, I think I have this wrong, I beg your pardon. Yep, those are goal two, goal, all right, goal, goal one, transformation plan. So we're gonna develop a transformation plan for your consideration, which reflects the evolving nature of libraries, um it will include a long term vision for the library, including options for maximizing service to the community, um it will include a rebranding proposal and um then funding considerations and options and that's um it, everything from our um city government to private and other public resources. Um a facilities plan, which will identify needed improvements to the current facility and desired features of potential renovation or expanded facility, that building was built to expand out the back um and to, and potentially as much as double the size of the library um as reflected by the needs in the community and how the library is being used. Um again, that's an aspirational goal, that's something that, you know, may not even happen by twenty twenty eight, but, but that we wanna keep in our in our um cadre of goals um and uh aspirations. And then we will develop and, and implement a formal statement which recognizes and respects indigenous peoples as traditional stewards of the land. And that is something that we are already, we've already begun to work, work on and we hope to have something to the library board and then to the city council in the next year.
I just liked the very well thought out, um when we built that place, uh thinking about, cause the front looks very architectural sound and then the sides, both those wings um are, are cheap, fairly cheap, I mean construction is not cheap, but to stand um it was very well thought out as far as pushing those wings further towards fall builds.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely right.
Yeah, pretty impressive.
Yeah. Okay, goal two. If I go this one right. Now if I gotta switch around, so let's stay in goal two, or goal one, because those are the initiative, so what are our desired outcomes for engaging the community in lifelong learning? We wanna support patrons for finding, using information in many formats. We wanna support at home learning, we wanna support homeschool families. Welcoming adolescents to come in and read and learn more, learning independently. We wanna be a substantial source of information for high school and collegiate learners. We wanna support patrons and job search and educational opportunities, support entrepreneurs, provide programs and services to our vulnerable and marginalized members of our community. Ensure that programs reflect and support diverse community groups. When you walk in the library, do you see yourself? Do you see things that's, that reflect you, do you see things, you know, we talk about the libraries being a mirror and a window, do you see things, do you see yourself and do you also have the opportunity to see how other people see the world? And we wanna continue to do that. Partner with city departments, key stakeholders and other organizations and then provide recent entertainment. Um and all of the ways that that is reflected, so amplifies information literacy for all ages, that means increasing direct engagement, offering um maintaining a vital and relevant collection, bilingual programming for all ages, collaborating with the Columbia County Historical Society and other organizations to offer and promote adult learning, um visiting authors, writing workshops. Um and then initiative, initiative two, different ways of learning, engaging with ideas and information. So early childhood goals, reaching out to hand, provide hands on um literacy opportunities for kiddos and toddlers um and preschool kids, both in the building and outside the building. Um as you know, Erin, um Keeney is already doing, works with Head Start and they have some other, um doing some other things, we wanna increase that, we will continue to increase that. Um goals for adults and teens, a full complement of digital and online support for those who can't come to the library and in person and virtual programs and other learning opportunities through the library. Um enhancing K through twelve learning, uh literacy workshops, interactive book recommendation sessions. Um setting up pop up model environments for young children. Um continuing to support homeschooling program, families, educators, students, local schools, how can we expand that and be more available, be outside the library more, after school activities. Um viability of education, one of, one of their um aspirations is to explore the viability of providing cards to educators from the sc- uh school district, the other schools um in the area and then library cards for students, which is a very big lift. And you know, we've already started exploring that and it's gonna be a several year project. Um and then engaging the maker communities, how do we support a maker community centered on the maker space? Finding public and private um um uh funding sources so that we can you know, again, have our maker space tech in position so that we can continue to support that work. Um working with, you know, collaborating with P C C O M A, school district, steam labs. Um how do we evolve that space, both physically expanding, uh making sure that the equipment that's in it, it continues to be relevant and current? And then how do we support staffing so that as it grows, we can grow the staffing and make even more opportunities available for our community? And then our third goal, you can go all the way to goal three, I'm hoping, sorry about the confusion there. I got that one wrong too, didn't I? All right, well, our initiatives for goal three, so enhance library services, what does that mean? Expand opportunities for community members to access library resources, expanding travel capacity by promoting, providing mobile services and access to services and materials outside of library hours. There's a lot of innovative opportunities and ideas out there that are already happening in rural, in rural Oregon, in other parts of the country, um everything from having lockers outside for people to come and get their materials if they can't come and pick up and that pick them up during the um during the hours that were open. A bookmobile, that's something that's on the board's um aspirational list. Um increasing communication about the availability of library services to underserved citizens. Building and fostering community connections, both face to face and virtually, I mean, it is a fact that the pandemic has changed the way we communicate and reach out to people. Um we acknowledge that and we wanna build on that and take advantage of the fact that we don't have, you don't have to come to our library to have a, have a programmatic experience or to engage with somebody um for help with research.
Well, Bill, would that be like if you, would you get on a schedule or you'd be like the ice cream man?
Well, traditionally, it's on a schedule, but you know. Um yeah, it would be, it would be another way of, um you know.
It's pretty good reading.
Ah, interesting. Yeah, we wish to go to tandem, right? Another way to engage people, right? Um partnering with local government, key stakeholders and other organizations to deliver services to the community and develop volunteer base, so that's inside the building and outside the building again. We, we need to be cognizant of the fact that we exist in a physical space and that physical space is the, is the, is the backbone of the services that we provide. And all the things you saw that, you saw that um in the semi, semi annual report, how people see the library, what they wanna use, how they use the library, we acknowledge that, we wanna make sure that our physical space is appropriate, relevant, and then we have the materials that people need. Um communicate to community members, um so what are we gonna do, initiative one, reach out to known and potential users of library services. Identify services useful to the members of the community who don't have ready access to the library. Create and use a wide variety of targeted information strategies relevant to all members of our community and use local, their locations throughout the city, we are most likely to reach them to draw new users and encourage some corrective feedback. And then work with the friends and other volunteers to support the effort. Um develop a volunteer base, you saw we have a great volunteer base already, seven hundred and fifty two hours, I think it was, in the last fiscal year of support. Um that's awesome, that's a great, that's a great place for us to be, if we have more volunteers, um we can have we can do other things besides the very important work that they're already doing. Um and so we'll reach out to community partners, engage community members, then reevaluate newsletter communications for efficacy, so this is just kind of a on the, on the ground. We need to do a diff, we need to communicate with our uh the library community more effectively and in different ways, we need to continue to use social media and all of the other resources are out there as well as the face to face and the newsletters and kind of the more traditional forms of communication. And the board really sees that that's something that we need to step up and, and do um, do better. And then evaluating the feasibility of a courier service, that's been on the city work plan for, I think since twenty twenty nine, twenty nineteen. Um and that concept is uh complicated, it's technically complicated and there's some other challenges. Uh but it does continue to be a topic of conversation amongst the library directors in the county. All of us acknowledge that that would be a, and that is an important service to be able to pro- provide to the county, to our library community. Making that happen is more, is a challenge, um and we continue to, you know, bump up against these technical challenges, how do we protect our patrons' uh privacy, it's none of our business what books, you know, we don't want anyone else to be able to see what materials so uh people are borrowing, for example. Um that's just one of the exam, one of the pieces of the puzzle that we're, we're working to work out, but as I said, all of the um public library directors in the county are all in support of that, so we continue to work on that. And then the bookmobile that I mentioned already, and then um options for providing services to out of city residences, residents, excuse me. Um fundraising quarterly and annual library cards, are there some ways that we can provide services to folks that don't live in the city or continue to provide services that are effective and innovative? That is what we wanna do. That's who we're about, yes, it is, it's a very, um it's aspirational, as I said, it's um the board thought very deeply about how we show up in the community and what we can and should be doing to support the community, to support.
Very well, very well thought out, yeah, um lots, lots of work, you can tell that the board um for the survey helped out a ton and then take that and run with it and um all these ideas. The library's used a lot in our community, you talked a little bit about um you know, trying to keep privatized stuff, but it's just in the day and age, nothing's, I mean, their data centers are popping up everywhere to control, they see what we are doing on this. At some point, I mean, it just is part of what it is, um you know. I, I know we, we protect our freedoms.
We do and.
And, and, but are, are really free, I mean, when you think about I've been talking about a mattress right now. And I'll click on Facebook or Google and mattress ads will start popping up, it's weird. I'm saying that they're listening in right now, but that is just weird to me, okay?
I can't speak to that, but I can tell you this, if you borrow something from the library, nobody will know. I can't speak to that, but I can tell you this. If you borrow something from the library, nobody will know what you borrowed. That information is secure.
Yes, I guess maybe low-tech enough, or maybe low-tech enough that it's not, you know, enough reason to be nerd that people want to buy or steal the information. You know what I mean?
Sure, yeah.
Because they listening, it's hearing.
I just, I just want to applaud you on the work. You've, me and you have talked many times about like resources in the community and you're. You just go above and beyond to ask questions and learn the, and learn St. Helens. So I just want to applaud you on that and. Always coming to me, never feel like you're pestering me because if I don't know the answer, I'll pass it to someone who I think does. I like that you're very interested and invested in St. Helens and making it better, so.
This, you know, this, I was talking to, um, I was talking to somebody at the break. This is um. A remarkable, a remarkable community and. Our library, I mean, we have a, we have a small staff of absolutely devoted, dedicated, smart public servants. Who really care about the work they do. They care about patrons. I mean, it's, it is, I've worked in, you know, several libraries. I have never seen a staff that is so. So um. All of the things I just described, and I think that also reflects the support that the community has given us, you know, we, we. They know, you know, when you come to the library, you have confidence that we are going to be able to help you and that we will do our best. And like you were saying, if we don't have the answer, we'll go find it. And I, you know, it's reflected in the number of people that come to the library and um, yeah, I mean, it's an incredible place. I'm proud to be.
Good to hear. Yes.
Yes.
I'm glad to have you aboard. That's true.
Just curious, I don't know if I, I gotta, I'm gonna answer this, but you had some uh. Yeah, so we're giving you some problems. I was wondering if that ever got resolved.
Ah, good question. Um, yes, yes, yep. We were able to find a way to support them and make sure that they were um following our rules of conduct. Yep, and they're, they're kind of back to the library. Yeah.
Win-win.
Yeah, it was. It was absolutely. Yep, good work on our staff's part.
Yeah, I love to see the teens in your building, so it's hard to get teens involved in anything. So having even a small group of teens in the library, that's an awesome win.
Yeah, thank you. I think so too. I'll pass that along.
Let this cave, you know, lying against their friends in another house, and they're, they're all for that.
Or Fight Club at thirteen night.
Thank you very much. Again, thanks for your support, everyone.
Okay, our next item is financial fourth quarter.
You can probably come down there.
Either or, if you're more comfortable there, those seem to be more comfortable. Yeah, I think we're okay with you being there.
We see you.
So, uh, to start. Uh, back when I did my third quarter financial report, I had noted that uh the budget estimate for property taxes was fairly aggressive. And that did pretty much prove true by the end of the years. Uh, we uh. Received about eighty-nine percent of uh budgeted. What we had budgeted to receive in property taxes. Uh, I also noted a typographical error in that section. Of my report that I sent out to you. Um, the current year's assessment collective was ninety-seven point, point five percent, not seven hundred and nine. Nine hundred and seventy-five percent. Just wanted to make that clarification. Uh, so we began to see some slowing in building and developments as the interest rates have increased. Uh, we did however, come in at thirteen percent over uh budget for licenses, permits and fees, which was um kind of a surprise. Uh, pleasant surprise, but um, you know, it's still slowing, but not slowing, you know, as rapidly as, as. We were anticipating, so that's good news. There was a significant decline in state shared revenues, particularly in the uh cannabis taxes. Uh, this is uh not a surprise. It's been pretty much um noted by state officials that, you know, the cannabis. Um, business i- is um, didn't take off quite the way it was predicted to be. Uh, so these declining revenues are negatively impacting the general fund, just as we talked about in our budget. Uh, meetings. And as we've discussed, uh, we will need to find s- uh sustainable resources to pay for general services or make. Decisions about the level of services we are providing. We also need to be very diligent about how we allocate one-time revenues. And so I know this is a repeating theme that, that y'all are hearing. But for example, the ARPA funds created some jobs. But now that those funds are being depleted, we are left with the problem of how we continue to fund those jobs and programs. So, you know, those, there's several things, uh maker space, for example. We want to, we need to explore how, how do we continue to fund those programs that people have really gotten used to and, and. Care about. Uh, our auditors were here in last month and performed preliminary fieldwork for our fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit and it went well. And we are on track to have our audit completed by December thirty-first deadline. I'm. Believe it's been a while since we've had that, met that deadline, so. So it's going well, so we'll see how it continues. Uh, the finance department, I here, are still have significant amount of catching up to do. Um, additionally, I have identified a few policies and procedures that need to be updated and or improved. We'll, we will be working on those more over the next couple months. We'll work out on a, um, with the, the departments. And then when there's a policy that needs to be updated by the council, we'll have those before you as well.
Most of those are fee schedules that you're talking about, right?
Um, no more, but more uh purchasing policies, financial policies. Uh, it's been a, a number of years since you've done financial policies updated.
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, lots of good work. Uh, I've been asked to be as, on a panel at a session uh speaking. At the Oregon Mayors Association Conference. On it also, yes, see you there.
Yep.
Yes, what's the session?
Pardon me?
What's the top, topic of the session?
Uh, revenue two oh one. Yeah, so.
But I'll be coming to that.
Alright, so we, so we'll bid a couple mayors on the panel as well as myself.
Yeah.
So it'll be a good top, good session.
Nice.
And then as always, if you have questions regarding my report or any suggestions on information that you would like to have included in future reports. Please let me know.
Yeah, thank you. You present your report? No. Okay, I think Jacob, before we get into this discussion, because they always hear you go a little bit, let's take our ten minute break, huh? You okay with that? Yeah, yeah. So I know uh Catherine did volunteer too, so. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and take a little ten minute recess, we'll.
Well, Jacob, why is August the best month?
Okay, welcome back as we all get settled in here. And our next side of the agenda is discussion of donation properties at Highway Thirty and Pittsburgh Road and.
Thank you, Mayor Scholl.
Yes.
Um, so I do have uh some presentation slides that are not in the packet, just to provide a little bit more information. Um, so just for context, I think you all know where we're at, but some of the viewers may not know. This is an aerial photo. Um, you can see Pittsburgh Road um towards the top, uh US Thirty is um. The north-south orientated road, the big wide one there, and then the area that we're looking at is, is circled in yellow. Um, at the bottom middle, you can see Burger King under construction, just to give everybody a little bit of location context. So we're gonna zoom in a little bit on the next slide. These are the parcels um of question, the ones. Being donated to the city. They're highlighted in blue. Um, I do want to give a little bit of a status as far as the donation agreement. Um, both parties have signed. Um, I talked to the title company last week or the week before. Um, and the transaction documents are with the escrow person and ready to be signed when ready, so. That, that stuff, um, is all tidied up. Uh, just wanted to give you an eye, eye on that. Um, now, another thing to be aware of. There is a restricted, restrictive covenant on these properties. And um, it was part of a transaction from the early two thousands and two thousand and three. Because the donor was owned or had some partial ownership with the Columbia Commons complex or the D M B etcetera is at. And as part of the transaction, they did not want to result in. Use competition with Columbia Commons, and so there's, there's a restriction that lasts until two thousand and fifty. Uh, where the properties cannot be used for office, medical, dental or clinical purposes. There are some exceptions about visibility from the highway or something like that. Um, but that's a good thing to be aware of. I know there's been discussion about pairing it with the um, uh, property soon to be on the market. Uh, on the corner, and if a person had one of those uses in mind. It's a potential kryptonite for that, so just that's, and I don't know if that would be the highest best use for something with such visibility, but something to be aware of. Just wanted to let you know that.
Just for the viewing public, the reason my concern was is that I just wouldn't want to see a big. Why I brought it to the council's attention, I'm, I'm prepared, by the way. And, and you agreed as a city planner, it'd be nice, and you're gonna talk a little bit further about that, what is where you're going with this conversation, but it'd just be nice to see that. At its maximum use.
Yeah, it's the, it's the intersection of two um highly traveled, high classified streets.
Yeah, and you're gonna talk a little bit more about the difficulties, I understand, today on, on some of the property here.
Yeah, I just, I, I thought it was, it was a good time to discuss some of the details. Uh, because there's always details.
Yeah, so, I'll let you continue on.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Rick. Um, okay, so we know where we're at, we know the properties, let's go to the next. The next slide, so the blue line um along Pittsburgh Road is a city water main. And then way down at the bottom, you see a light green line, and that's where the um sewer main ends. So there's no other sewer in immediate proximity to it, and that's um. One of the, the, the more significant issues, you'll see a, a red dotted line. And what that's showing is um. Somehow, someday. Uh, however the planets align. It would be ideal to be able to get that sewer um to. Those properties, because that's gonna maximize uh the potential use. Otherwise, um, someone's looking at a use that doesn't need um any type of sanitary sewage, which is pretty limiting. Or um, an onsite system. Which for non-residential purposes is a little more feasible, but, but still limiting and then brought the mercy of the, of the county people who look at that. So. When we reviewed the Columbia Commons subdivision, this is the one where Dairy Queen, Burger King, all those are going at. Um, we did consider the ability to extend the sewer. And based on all the feedback from the engineers, um, and I, I'll have something on the next slide that shows it, but we're not ready for that yet. The easement was placed where it's at there and not closer to the highway because of topography. Um, not considering topography, it'd be like, well, why are you putting it here? Because now you have to go through one, two. A couple properties uh to get to um the two being donated and then the other one on the corner. So tenant sanitary sewer is, is um an issue. Uh, we have water at the north. Uh, so it's, it's there accessible. Um, however, if these properties were separate, not under the same ownership. Um, being able for each of them to have access to water uh would, would be important. And then I just also want to mention um some of the wetlands in there, you know, that lake. Along the uh upper left side, you see that blue shading. There's also um. Uh, wetland uh at the southern end of the uh triangular property proposed to be donated. If you went out there, you'd see it's a big, big old hole. So a little bit more information about utilities.
Now, is that included or Korean buffer, the well and restrictions that the city has, because it looks very significant.
Yeah, the buffer is shown.
Yes.
Those wetlands have not been delineated, so they are estimates, they're, they, they did not reflect precision.
Because city has even stronger permissions than the state.
Yeah, the, the buffers are included in these polygons.
Yes, that's why I would be at that, thinking, oh, it doesn't seem. What if you could apply for variances on some of those?
And there's some pre-existing impacts. Some of those, some of the development was there before two thousand and three when the laws took effect. So the next slide, so we're looking at the. Lot at the bottom of this screen on the next, oh. So I just, I wanted you to have a good um visual on this easement. So the, the lot that's front and center, that's the Dairy Queen lot. And the, the yellow is the utility easement where the water line and sewer line were extended, and you can see that the easement. Um, kind of beers up to the west. And that would be where the sewer line would come out and extend somewhere to the north. Um, now, looking at it two dimensionally, and my thought back when we were working on the subdivision, well, why can't we just put it? To the right closer to the highway, then you have a straight shot, and that was because the topography. Um, the engineers said, well, that won't work, and it was engineers on our side and their side. So that's why the easement. Looks kind of weird. Alright, so. Let's break this down into the building blocks. The uh properties to be donated are in yellow and then the other one uh potentially on the market soon is in pink. And I want to. Point out that uh this actually. And the line is here along the west side of the Eighteenth Street right of way. And then the north side of this little section of um, well, it's actually West Street right of way. You have two rights over here, you have West Street. And then Pittsburgh Road, so that's. Yeah, it's, and it's, it's part of the original plat of St. Helens. And I never really thought about any of the plat of St. Helens being on the other side of the highway, um but some of the gun, some of it is, this little corner. That's very important um when we talk about. Right-of-way case, right-of-way vacations and where that right-of-way goes if vacated. Because if this is the boundary of that original subdivision. Um, any of this right-of-way from the original subdivision did not come from the outer lands. And I'm gonna uh have some stuff that depicts that, but I wanted to make sure you understood that this is the corner. Of the original plat of St. Helens. You can even see here city limits, you know, that was the city limits at the time.
So it still is around by the city of St. Helens.
Yes. Yeah, still within ours. Now Pittsburgh Road would be the county's, but.
Yeah.
We're not gonna touch Pittsburgh, so. Uh, so we go to the next slide, this is um. Visualization, um, so the the potential, so let's say all of that right-of-way was vacated. Um, and I just kinda showed, you know, the darker yellow, where it would go, the darker red, where it would go. And if you notice how that one lot um, kind of has a smirky face on it, you see that lot is jealous. Because it does not, it's not entitled to any right-of-way. So I just wanted you to understand, if vacated, where it would go, that's the purposes of that.
The yellow pieces could be connected by that right-of-way. Notice that, and then.
It could, yeah, and that would be great, because we like wetland tracks or wetland encumbered properties. To be with others, so they don't become orphaned.
I I would suspect that would be where the ingress and egress was for the development anyhow there, so it probably wouldn't wanna all be dedicated, maybe, maybe not. Um, for the purpose, because why have more property, it's taxable, then you have to.
Um, and that brings us to our next slide.
We would ask that probably that section be up to a city standard uh, for future adoption of Pittsburgh Road, right? And development of that.
Um, it's very possible.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, if it was a proposal of enough magnitude, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Um, so i- if we were to consider vacation, um. You know, there may be a a a partial, but it would all go to one side, it wouldn't mean in the middle, and so this just depicts what a partial. Um, could mean, there's no numbers on there, so it's a question of, you know, how how much width do you um, retain? Um, and another thing to consider, if if we go through the city process, there is a lot of private gain. Um, and the ones we've done recently have been all city, and that's just a thing to consider about precedent, stuff like that, um. So I wanna talk about the vacation a little bit, um, cuz this is something the mayor has brought up before. Um, and I wanna at least, you know, we don't have a formal application, but I wanna at least get some of those preliminary considerations, just so you're thinking about it. And for discussion purposes, so on the south side, the reason for not eliminating um, the entire vacation. There's a couple reasons, one um, would be for utility passage. Now. When we talk about utility passage, there's a variety of ways to do that right-of-way easement, typically right-of-way is the favored. Um, because we have a little more control about what gets built, there is more consistency on what's built, a street versus a. Much of other random improvements, and it makes it um, less of a pain for our engineering and public work staff. When when, when it's a street, not a bunch of buildings and fences and people's favorite rose bushes and stuff like that. And so there's utility passage for the sewer, um. And maybe, maybe even across the street, the uh. Property to the north on the other side of Pittsburgh Road, um, is in the county, I know it's served by an onsite system. And if sewer was there, you know, a higher, better use uh, for that would be possible.
So on all expectations though, that being solved assault and topography. Um, I think you'd have a hard time reaching the other side of that, I'm not an engineer, but I think if you were to take a topo and go from thrower by the wrecking yard, your wrecking yard. And then go to your manhole, you won't have the drop there.
And and and.
So.
And we haven't drug our engineering department into this.
Yeah.
So.
Changes everything.
You know, this is, this is all planner preliminary, um.
And 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 so that the reason, and the reason I brought it up is because of the fact that um, uh. And all reasons, the looking at this, I would say from my standpoint, and my, I was thinking only from my view. I don't know what you guys raised there on this, and and I thought I talked a little bit with you about this. Is that that property as a whole would not spark having to have utilities go through there, because. Um, it's just not feasible, um, as far as the sewer even. The drop from the sewer there, um, that you originally talked about where Dairy Queen is at. Just reach out that side and uh, valuable piece of property. We can either make it completely unaffordable for somebody, or we can spark the moment.
Is that a septic on that red spot right now? Obviously, there was a home there for a long time.
It must be, it must be, um.
With utilities there too, right?
Overhead power.
Yeah, it was inoperable now, so I'm guessing it has water since water's there in overhead.
Yeah, and the reason I agree that now is because. You're just correct, and you're correct in what you just said. We want our storage unit there? On that intersection? Because then they don't have the sewer water through there, they can leave that easement and say, oh, this be our alleyway for in-between buildings. Or do we want good, solid development there, and that's why I'm bringing this to the council's attention.
No, and another reason for that right-of-way, if if the properties are in separate ownership and developed separately. Um, there would be a a reason for that, access for water.
Absolutely.
From the other side, um, and then um. Oh, wow, south, so south side, another potential thing is turnaround provisions, the right-of-way is only sixty feet wide and. Um, a cul-de-sac for a commercial purpose, like a hundred feet wide, so it wouldn't fit, but that's, you know, that's just one of the things. This isn't a formal vacation, so I just try to think of the. Uh, the big ticket items that would be considered, assuming we went through that, um, so then from the north, we talked about um, the water accessing. Um, properties under different ownership, and then as well as shared um, access um, function between those properties. Um, yeah, if they're all together, it changes the scenario a little bit. Um, you know, how do you guarantee that happens is is the question too, um.
Do we know what the capacity of the stormwater looks like in that particular area? I know we were focusing on other areas around McBride. And some of the heavier ones that are like crisis right now, what does that area look like?
What you mean for sanitary sewer?
Yeah.
Um.
That would be a reason why we would maybe halt building.
It's it's something, and I mentioned this in the memo, um, when I talked to engineering about it briefly. You know, one of their comments was, y- you know, is it a good time for sewer planning? Um, when we're trying to fix our convey- our conveyance issue.
That is my question.
And and that's just, you know, that'll be fixed eventually. How how soon that sewer is able to go through? Uh, you know, that could be, you either wait for development to happen, so you can make it happen, and that could be decades. Or you try to.
Well, another question, what, like a ride aid and a uh, Safeway, for example. What their actual sewage use is compared to that was all houses.
Well, we could restrict it if there is capacity issues in that area, right?
Well, ba- based on what we've done so far, um. If if there was a sanitary sewer connection and we're still in the situation where our conveyance isn't upgraded, you know, we have that additional fee. Structure that that we would apply.
I just don't wanna see a missed opportunity of seeing that little pink chunk go away and not have that as a whole focus on future development, that's my whole. And.
I'm just not sure if it's viable, though, like, would he, would Friday even be interested in something like that, you know, I don't think.
Have you talked to a realtor? We had a realtor came in, and I apologize that you missed the last, last meeting, but uh. Um, probably not a piece of chunk of property altogether, so um, it's definitely, um.
Has there been interest in it?
It's not even on the market yet.
But, you know, people talk.
Why we're doing this.
Should play try to come?
Well, so I had Sean Stripp reach out to me from Rex Murray, cuz I went up to Rex Murray, who's been a budding property owner, who myself, I'm his property. Would love to sit down with her city planner, I said, well, this is just premature, so Sean Stripp has reached out. And I told her exactly what it was, and she said, yeah, that's a good chunk of property, and I can see why they were just asking me about. Questions, and so I said, I'd reach out to you and ask about it, and well, it's just in the very beginning stages, nobody knows if that property is even up for sale. Um, I had Aaron Majors who I met through the homeowner, the reason all this happened was by chance, I seen the homeowner cleaning it up. And if you go back, three slides, Kathy, maybe four. Yeah, a lot more, actually. Yeah, now I went to the previous owner, I said, hey, I'm Mayor Shaw, knew it that we were getting ready to inherit those, cuz we've been talking about it. And I said, first and foremost, I wanna thank you for cleaning up this property, cuz it does not have boats in all this miscellaneous garbage sitting around. And I said, uh, we are in the process of adhering to letting properties here, and what are you planning to do with this property? And the son, I met the mother, said, well, we're getting ready to put it on the market, and I said, well. Why don't you give my card, I gave him two cards, here's one for you and for your realtor, you're already here in majors. And uh, so the story goes that. That later that week, three days later, he called me and I said, you need to contact my city administrator and. Um, I would love to have you at council meeting to show up, because I think these properties need to be utilized as a whole. Instead of just a one acre, it's could be potentially four acres there, me and Jacob have done an aerial. Of all the properties that could potentially be used, that includes a little portion of Rex's if he chose to sell, and that's totally up to him. But he was on board, um, I have zero interest in the the game, other than I wanna see our city have some. A really good quarter of development, um, and that serves our citizens well, and it's. Rock is hard to develop, and if you have a big enough chunk, it makes it worthwhile. And you ask other realtors on it, it, you know, that as a whole, or just this little corners. So they're all saying, yeah, that's a good chunk of property, it's uh, a high visibility, high use, um. And that's the whole reason for this discussion, John.
And that, I mean, access to sewer brings a tremendous amount of value in lots of ways.
Yes, and that's the difficulty reason, uh, part portion of this property is the sewer, that we need to make sure people understand, well, they do get into it. But if not in dollars, you go spending five hundred thousand getting sewer over there, you're at one point five, and you're talking about big boys league.
Once you go into people's properties. Develop.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I see the value in the property, and I understand the whole pitch, you know, totally makes sense to me, but I. Currently think that we need to buckle down a little bit and not make any purchases right now. And I just be a little conservative for a while, um, while we try to get our.
It's actually a pitch to sell ours and fund a police and a maker's base, was my pitch, I have a profit side.
Create it?
Yes. Wait for a police offer, wait for a maker's base. Yep, yep, on the bundle. Yeah, we'll talk about it, I seen that look in John Walsh's eyes, and I said, John, we're not buying property.
No buying, Jessica says no buying for a while.
Now, the 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 right-of-way with the Pittsburgh Road, Pittsburgh is an arterial, the minimum width is sixty feet, but the extra width. Because it's at the confluence of two major streets, has a lot of value potentially in the future, it gave a road as a good example, we wish it was wider.
Yeah.
Um, and so there would, the the point is, if we had a vacation, we would have to look carefully.
Absolutely.
Along, along.
Maybe a mile over bridge or whatever in the future.
There will have to be a transportation valuation, that intersection, you know, is already pretty heavy, so, yeah.
It would allow for alignment if you were to use some of that West Street. It would allow for a little bit better alignment on that intersection.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Right-of-way has value, so i- if if that's something the council wanted us to to pursue. Um, just, you know, you know, we had to.
Ultimately, you live by his property, he's gonna end up dealing with the city, and I thought we could as a city facilitate this portion of of this. Um, a little bit to the best of our abilities, let people know this is what the sewer is, be totally up. Fourth and upcoming, and this is all we're doing, is trying to um, give you the information, and um. A- a- and we're gonna, what money we're making is just going towards public service, basically. We're not looking to profit off of it, we're just paying somewhere short, and here's what we have, that's m- my point of view of it. How that, hopefully, they're gonna be here anyhow, even if they bought the corner bought, and they wanna do something there. Go to engineering, like everybody has to do, with a plan. And instead of a little plan, why not a big plan?
Yeah, I think, so for the council, it's it's kind of a question of timing, um, you know, do you proactively just try to? Un-unload it now, and ideally, we with both parcels, that way we don't have an orphan. Um, or do you wait and see what kind of proposals we get, um, so conceivably. We get a proposal for the corner lot, and and so now our controls are zoning, right? Um, but if you have the adjacent property, and if you um, want to use that as a catalyst to help steer. What happens there, it's another tool to do so, um, so there's a strategy of of waiting and trying to use it as a tool. Or just unloading it now, and I guess that's a debate, um.
What did you say the zoning was again, I think I missed.
It's all highway commercial, um, so highway commercial is not gonna allow housing, and that's not gonna allow storage.
It won't allow storage?
No, yeah, it, storage was allowed in commercial years ago, but not now.
Does that corner lot have that clause where you can't have offices, multiple?
The corner one does not, cuz it wasn't, well, at least I'm not aware of it having it, because it wasn't part of that transaction with Columbia Commons. And since, I mean, the Adams had, have had it for decades, so I I would be shocked if it had that restriction.
So that, well, um, did you have more of what more on the presentation, you covered pretty much everything, I think.
No, that was all the stuff I wanted to talk about, so.
No, I I, well, I think, uh, because I brought it up and had Aaron Majors here last meeting, and uh. Counselor Sunday said, you know, with that aerial and stuff, so. You know, and probably that we're not, you know, this is what's going on. And why this became about, there's mayor out windows, he drove by, seeing it getting cleaned up, and stopped in and said, what are you?
Proactive, not knowing. Positive work.
They were actually really good people, and she spoke on uh, that her dad used to have about eight cabins on that. And then nineteen sixty-two, the Columbus Day Storm, there were big fir trees around it. And uh, it took, that took out about four of those, four or five of those cabins. Um, blowing the trees down from the Columbus Day Storm, which was quite an event back in nineteen sixty-two, wasn't alive then, but I heard all about it, so. John?
No, it was probably a lot smaller then.
Do you have anything you wanna add to this? I mean, it makes sense to.
That is great, it's a great property, if somebody is interested and was willing to bring sewer, um.
Well, in the city.
Great development.
Well, I think what Jacob ended with, though, that's being able to leverage the the roads and helping through that process may be able to help development too.
So would we advertise that?
No, just facilitate through, they've already picked a realtor, normally we go through a process. Well, I think we've dealt with a realtor once before, but um, they've dealt with a realtor, and I. I don't think you wanna go with two opposing realtors, you wanna have all in one, but you could. That would be part of the discussions of this process. Um, Aaron Majors just happened already be picked by when I, it's still not for sale. I mean, they still don't have it completely up, he said their their prices. Still wavering, but he's not completely sure, and that was a talk to him just at uh, at uh, our meeting, last meeting. Well, completely, I haven't talked to him since. But he said that the whole chunk is roughly, would be probably about a million, in our view. Alright, good, yep, thank you, yes. Um, okay, so let's move on to our city administrator report.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, I think I'll I'll lead with, um, tonight's agenda, we have a move of the. New development block grant for the sewer capacity improvements, the twenty-five million dollars that we're getting, advanced work. Advance work in our conveyance in the three basins. Money from our rate payers, so we're pretty pretty pleased with that, staff working hard, things happen here with that and. As part of that, but. So. The the news of Councilor Berkeley's resignation um for service. Kind of moving on to the next chapter of what we're gonna do about that, and the charter says at the next regular meeting, which would actually be the work session, but it'd be tonight's meeting. If you want to. The council should talk about the process of what, how you want to go about. Right here, any, how you want to go about your process and it's a hundred percent your own.
Section thirty two, filling vacancies. Right here.
So that's. Talk about that and if you want to start that now, talk about it more tonight or if you want to do it all tonight.
Tonight.
Wanted to, that is a placeholder or something that the charter requires.
There's some discrepancy in what other people are putting as law out there right now um. Person who ran for council, uh it reads uh. Your, my eyes are really bad, can you just read out, please, guys?
Your glasses?
Read all day, especially the yellow where we're at. Um I apologize to Counselor Sunday.
Okay.
I don't, my glasses, it's really small.
The team player.
Yes, yes.
When a vacancy in the position of counselor occurs, the city council, the next regularly scheduled council meeting shall begin the process of filling the vacancy as follows. If two years or more remain on the term of a council position when such position is declared vacant, the council may appoint by majority vote the remaining counselors and mayor. A qualified elector to serve until the next scheduled election, that is at least sixty days after the appointment is made. Any qualified elector under this charter may make the proper nominating procedures as outlined in section twenty eight. Nominations, nominations and seek election for the remaining term of the council position that was declared vacant at the scheduled election. If there is less than two years remaining in a council position declared vacant. The remaining counselors and mayor shall appoint a qualified elector to serve the remaining term of the vacant council position. In either case, the council points a qualified elector to a vacant council position. The council should hold a public meeting to interview potential candidates. The council may use whatever methods and determines are necessary to obtain qualified electors to serve on the council.
Thank you.
I do have an application that we used in the past. Just like we would do for boards and commissions, it's similar to that, just in case you would want to do an application process.
Okay, um definitely something we'll talk about, it says we do it in our our meeting, so we have to do it tonight, but that's. No, just moving forward on what we want to help with the process.
Matthew has something he wants to say.
Hi, Mayor.
Matthew, yeah, thank you for chiming in.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing, uh. The section thirty two regarding filling vacancies uh as read from the charter is is correct, obviously. Um but there's a section before that, section thirty one. Which defines uh when the seat becomes actually vacant. So you can't proceed with filling the vacancy until the seats are actually vacant. And um it says a mayor or council office becomes vacant. Uh either A upon the incumbent's death, adjudicated incompetence or recall from the office. Part B is a declaration by the council. Uh after the incumbents and there's a list of six items, the last of which is a resignation from the office. So even though the the resignation letter has been received. Council um will still need to declare that seat to be vacant before it can proceed with filling it.
Okay, we're gonna put that on as an action item tonight then, okay?
Okay.
So would it actually go into the next meeting that we should adopt the process? We have to.
I I think that it could be, you know, if you're. If you're declaring it tonight to be vacant.
Yeah.
Um I would read that to be the next regularly scheduled one, which would mean then the following meeting uh that is regularly scheduled for when. Um to begin the process.
It would be August uh sixteen, seventeen, whatever it is, no, eighteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, August sixteen. Okay, uh could we announce, have we make it vacant, do we go ahead and make the announcement for applicants?
I think that's starting the process.
Right, I think you'll be you'll be declaring it vacant tonight. And then at your next meeting is when you'll begin the process of filling the vacancy. Um. So yeah, so after it's. After it's vacant, um.
Are you sure on this? Because the one person who's really hot after it is an attorney that ran for council and he's already putting it. As law on Facebook, I'm already seeing it all over, so I just want to make sure that we're completely right on this process.
Uh I'm I'm reading to directly from your charter, Mayor.
No, but I just want to make sure because we're not attorneys and you'll, yes. That's all I'm trying to just make sure that we're doing it correct.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
Thank you for weighing in on that.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we declare tonight and then next meeting we.
Talk about.
Process, yes, okay. We haven't been doing the item tonight for uh the resignation letter.
Declaration that the seat is open.
Okay, sorry about that, John.
No, that was, things need to be addressed, housekeeping. Around that, so the. The city boat is in the water, it's um. But we said in time for San down in San Castle Festival, we had some. Challenges getting the electronics and how it was wired, considering now it's computers, brains and getting a technician was. But as of the start of this meeting, it actually works correctly. The captain or licensed captain has been using the boat, thinks it's great. Um yeah, so that's things on track this weekend. Barely.
There's a boat.
And it's the stability, they everything about loading and uploading, when everything's working just. Very, very, everybody's in the gap, that's operational.
Good.
The uh. Police station project is moving on, we're on schedule, uh seem to be on, to this point, it's still on. Looking at some early lead items as far as getting electrical equipment, the switches and the gear. Also working with the solar folks, we're gonna get a contract out of the ninety four thousand dollar solar planning grant that we got, I've been talking about. And that'll probably be here by next next meeting. And they're. Related but in independent, so they're they're proceeding with the police station as. As scheduled, the the solar project is going to fit into that however they fit into that, so it'll be a planning effort and then. You know, looking at a grant that goes after the planning side to come back and get more. More funds to do some of the construction related to that and. You know, could potentially be a net zero or even. Possible to the greatest solar installation. But still on track for March construction and then still contemplating the early fill package. Um first street construction, I noticed this sort of a bit of a pause here at the the intersection right here and the reason that is that the contractors. Done their fulfill their requirements to date. We've asked them to look at the undergrounding and the trenches and we're kind of. When you look at the project, I've spent a lot of time wandering around that intersection, imagining what it looks like with undergrounding, without undergrounding and. Just how in twenty years we would have wished we'd done it no matter, you know, found a way to do it and then we're. Working with the contractor, it's a lot of rock, it's really solid, the the utilities, drug utilities have all agreed to kind of come up on the bottom of their trench. There's so much rock, which saves a tremendous amount of money. Um basically, uh the variance from there to full standards and. We're trying to get with the contractor to get to us. Price and spilt the work, it's something that. Personally, I feel like a lot of team feels that if we don't do it now, it'll probably never happen. Yeah, that with the gateway arch, wires going all over the place, just.
A mess.
It it would not look right, so we're a little bit of a pause there, but. And then a lot of league we had the other day, but certainly so, so. Good wash. Last week, I had an opportunity, actually invited ourselves down to the port of Calama to watch. To learn what what they've been doing down at the the port, I invited Mohammed and Jenny along just to. Meet with court director there that has been working on those projects for his entire career. Forty one years he's been, started pulling weeds and now he's the executive director, but they are doing just absolutely amazing things. Uh working with McNamons, they have the McNamons there, they have built beaches, they build a ferry terminal, they have regular ferries, they have buses that come. Building this outdoor market that's just gigantic um. Trails along the riverfront. Doing the up and over the highway with elevator service, ADA access types types of things and uh just really. Great to pick somebody's brain, it's working on that long, laid laid all the planning out and they're executing, executing, that's. This is very, very interesting.
Can you talk to them about their project for the river here? By the trailer park, what is that in there, they're building the dock.
I'm not sure if that's clam or not.
Pretty sure it's.
Pretty sure we didn't talk about that. There is a, they are working on a spur project to bring in another rail customer.
Just curious what.
One of the things they shared.
Curious, Mayor.
One of the things they shared was they they tie-ins on their analytics for tourism, they embrace tourism. They were heavy heavy industrial all the way and they've seen the light over the last fifteen. Years or so and gravitated more towards tourism investments. Their analytics that they have and there's services out there that can produce you. Data that is cell phone driven data that will show you. Uh how many people are coming, how far they're coming, who's your range of customer?
What mattress you want to buy?
Yeah, all of that stuff and and and.
AI.
There, you know, he was sharing that and it's not personalized, but who knows?
Yeah.
Um that goes all the way from Everett to Eugene is their market that comes to the little town of three thousand, Clama. And they have four hundred fifty thousand unique visitors. Uh annually in that 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 space over there, just really impressive and something. You know, we, as far as related to Halloween Town, we might want to look at too.
They go upstairs to the minimums and you head towards a bar and there's a hallway and you go down and you press the.
Secret room.
Yeah, you press this the little um. Pictures on the wall and eventually you opens up to a secret room, yes.
But I think McNamons would be a wonderful partner here and we're that is discussion we're hoping to have at some point soon here, so. The gateway project is. We're pretty close, we're about ninety percent, we're gonna be meeting internally, there's a stakeholder. Um I think Counselor Sunday saw that today, um so let's share that with the. Feedback from the stakeholders and then share that with sixteen, next meeting. The uh Veterans Memorial Project, the grant that we got. Is moving along, the projects for is on. Scheduled, the goal is to be completed by Veterans Day in November eleventh, so we'll be getting after it and it's really an out of the way enough that um. Well, shouldn't conflict with anything throughout the summer as far as that's things like that. But they have the support and grant. So I noticed that uh. Our own. Jenny Dincho is nominated to the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy. So offshoot of the Organistic Managers Association supporting more more women at leader leadership positions. Sharon wrote, this is one of the selections, it's competitive to get into it, if you're one, but she's been invited to apply, so proud of that and. Historic Landmarks Commission, we've got some grants coming up. With the clock tower for. One day, be more of a competitive processes here. Good project and two other proposals that the. Commission acting as historic landmarks will have that at the.
Next week, yeah, thanks, Steve.
Suzanne Von Avicii, our Congresswoman, is coming, coming to town on August fifteenth and she's going to. Eat and swat the river, river rock, the river front. Meet and greet, bow up, second.
Pretty huge asset this whole.
Yeah, we've got some real champions, it's really great.
Yeah.
Anybody that wants to come to that, you can do that. The uh, the River Rock Project, I'm going just totally random order, sorry. The River Rock Project is out to bid right now, moved it up at last week, there'll be a pre. Pre-bid meeting. Learn about and apart we have four contractors have picked up the. Lands, it's great and. Hope to get more, so.
Good.
Then uh something, so we've had a number of. Movies filmed here, obviously, with Halloween Town and. Most recently, we had the eighties horror film show come come into a film here and.
Set for the eighties.
Set and set.
For what, uh, let's see, I think, screen, yeah, test screen?
Test screen.
Test screen, yes.
There's been movies for film videos and there's documentaries going on, the creation of Halloween Town going that are gonna play publicly here in a bit. And and this council's never, the way we handle that internally is. Definitely very supportive of people that want to come and film because that's a, it's really good attention for communities, most communities are very. Glad to have it. So we just manage it to, we don't have a film department, Portland has a whole film division about people coming. Um we just do right away permits and thank them for being here and they spend lots of money while they're here and still getting inconvenience. I just wanted to kind of put that out there, there's another one that could be pretty impactful, since showing some interest that I'm not. And Jose, um talked about publicly yet, but. How do you feel as a council about supporting film, holding it for the. Mention to our community?
Great, as long as they don't, you know, talk too much for rockets, but I think mostly people like it, don't go so blind too much.
Is the, where the construction down here, don't bottleneck it up. That is really how, they have a bunch of mill property if they realize that they. That they need to be skeleton down here and can set about there. You know, as far as.
Yeah.
A lot of stuff they need to transport from there to here.
My perspective is we want to be loved, but we don't want to be loved, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, you know, I think that maybe that whole back parking lot now with what we're doing out here would not be feasible. That's what happened on that.
Essentially, yeah, especially with summer and all all that.
Yeah, going on over there.
From the high school up the road.
Yeah, a lot of, still a lot of activity.
A lot of progress going on in the years.
Talked to some of the business owners when this last one was going on and they all said it was a positive experience and they were having fun redecorating their storefronts and.
I think they like to be notified, you know, which I think, yeah, I think that's just the biggest thing, just like let people know what's going on.
You realize that top of the film group people and they're all like a really close knit group that um worked for the Oregon. Film Association and they travel from city to city and. Um at random, you know, not, they're all not on the same set at all times, but they they just all knew each other. Have a cool network. Well, family of those people, sat in the setup, right, for the film, for the film companies themselves, so.
Well, you have to tell me which movie it is, so.
Well, you can, okay, yeah. Um, actually, again, that's all I got, John.
Okay, alright, so no special meetings tonight, um we are adjourned.